Good evening.
Turn your radio on.
Oh, I'm on, I'm on, okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to take a quick moment to thank everybody for showing up tonight and taking some time out of your busy day, so I appreciate that. So, let's get this started for the regular meeting of the School Board of Trustees for the East Central Independent School District on November nineteenth at six thirty. Ms. Barrientos, can you call us to order?
Yes, sir. Del Brazil.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Here.
James Mopie.
Here.
Morning, Curtis.
Here.
Steve Bryant.
Here.
Present, we are formed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrientos. On to item number two, Player in Prejudice. Mr. Toscano, who do we have tonight?
Yes, sir. I'd like to turn it over to our wonderful principal from Highland Forest Elementary, Ms. Brittany Irvin, and her lovely fine arts teacher, amazing fine arts teacher, Ms. Tonsel.
My stomach got in the way. Good evening, Mr. Toscano, President Massengill, and members of the board. It is my honor to come before you this evening and present a few of our amazing choir students from Highland Forest Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please bow your heads for a moment of prayer. Dear Lord Jesus, thank you for our family, teachers, and friends. Thank you for everyone here tonight. We ask for wisdom to walk in love, peace, and unity in all that we do. Please keep us healthy and safe. Give us the strength and grace to continue to have a great school year. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Y'all may be seated. Thank you for having us tonight. We are honored to be here. Wanted to inform you that just recently, we had our very first United Elementary District Veterans Day program, and it was truly an amazing thing. The students at East Central really blew all of us away in really just grasping, you know, the need to really honor those to whom honors due. So, tonight, we wanted to share one of the songs that they were able to sing that night. It's called "Because of You." And we would like tonight to ask anyone who has served in our military who is a veteran, if you would please stand to be recognized.
Him too. Him too.
Thank you, students. You guys did an amazing job, and thank you, Ms. Tonsel. Will the families of these students please stand to be recognized? We thank you for sharing your students with us. We really do. They are an amazing group of students. Thank you, Ms. Tonsel, for organizing this event, and thank you all for your time in allowing us to showcase some of our special students. We have a special gift for you guys. We already put it up there by y'all. There's some Boonwellows and then a Nothing Bunk Cake, and then some of our second grade students went ahead and wrote you some thank you letters for everything y'all do for us. So, thank you, and we hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you very much, Ms. Irvin and Ms. Tonsel. Appreciate y'all's hard work and great seeing the kids here. Thank you very much. So, on to item three, awards and recognition. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, we've got some exciting recognitions this evening. We have an amazing student who actually published her own book, and we're going to recognize her this evening. We also, with your support, were able to add officers to our force so that we had an officer presence at every single school in our system. So, we'll be swearing in our new officers this evening, as well as promoting one of our veterans. And then lastly, we'll be working with CPS tonight to receive a rebate check for participating again in the Demand Response Program. So, at this time, Mr. Oliver?
Good evening, and thank you, board members and Superintendent Toscano, for recognizing an exemplary student this month. Please welcome DeShawna Davis. DeShawna Davis is a senior at East Central and a member of the Avid Program. In October, she officially became a published author. DeShawna's book, Art and Abuse, is now available on Amazon dot com. When she was younger, she wanted to become an English teacher, but then she realized what her real dream was. After DeShawna wrote her first script, she understood that she wanted to become a scriptwriter and an author. She started by publishing her stories on the internet and then began writing her first novel. It took her three years to finish, but here she is now with her first published novel. So, when she's famous and her books become feature films starring A-list actors, we'll remember her because once a hornet, always a hornet. Congratulations, DeShawna.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to Mr. McKay, who let me come here and let me show how hard I worked to publish this novel. And I also want to thank my family, which is my mom and my grandparents, who supported me through writing this book. And I also want to thank some of my friends who purchased my book. But I am really proud of how hard I worked to get this novel published, and I know that there is more to come, so thank you, everyone.
And so, speaking of purchasing books, we did purchase a copy, and the entire board did sign it, and we would like to present that to you, DeShawna.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to introduce Chief Trniewski for a special ceremony.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Toscano, board members. Today's a very exciting day in the history of the East Central Police Department. I don't know if some of you are aware, but in January, we will complete thirty years of service when the department was formed, so we're in our thirty-year celebration here. And we're going to be swearing in five new officers, which combined bring over a hundred and fifty years of law enforcement experience to our community and to our schools. So, it's very exciting. We're very proud. Went through the process, applicant processing, and I think we picked the best. So, without further delay, I also have a special guest that's going to assist me in administering the oath, our Honorable Judge Rogelio Lopez of Bear County Precinct Four. Judge, can you come up? Okay, so without due delay, let's start. Officer Ben Esquivel. Officer Esquivel is a thirty-year veteran of San Antonio Police Department, with his last assignment being one of the hostage negotiators for the department. Officer Esquivel is assigned to Pecan Valley Elementary. Officer Moret Pritchardo. Officer Pritchardo has over twenty years of law enforcement experience, with twelve years as a Northeast ISD police officer. Worked at various stages from the elementary level all the way to the high school level and some support divisions. She also did eight years at Pleasanton Police Department. We're excited to have her here, recruited her, and she is assigned to Sinclair Elementary, and she does have an associate's degree in criminal justice. Officer Frank Bellino. Officer Bellino has over thirty-eight years of law enforcement. He just basically retired from the Bear County Sheriff's Office with the rank of Senior Sergeant. Some of y'all, Officer Bellino is not new to the district. He worked for us for almost eleven years on a part-time capacity and assisted us in football games. He retired. He knew where he needed to come, full-time. So, Officer Bellino has a master's degree in Catholic theology, and he does our DAP students, investigations, and he's also assigned to the high school on a part-time basis. Officer Gilbert Rocha. Officer Rocha retired from San Antonio Police Department after thirty-four years. His last position with the police department before he retired, he was what they call Night Criminal Investigations Detective. Officer Rocha has a bachelor's in criminal justice and a master's degree in public administration. He is assigned to Highland Forest Elementary. So, we have a support officer, Raul Guerrero. Officer Guerrero has over twenty-four years of law enforcement experience, twelve years of it in Northeast ISDPD, and three years of it in East Central ISD back in the nineties. He left us, went to Northeast, decided that was not the place, so he wanted to come back. Officer Guerrero handles our money run for child nutrition, and he's also a support officer. He fills in as a subposition whenever one of our officers is ill or is in in-service training, so we can still have full service to our campuses, okay? So, Judge?
If I could ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Peace Officer for the East Central Independent School District Police Department and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the state of Texas. So, help me God. Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, so we have one promotion within our department. Officer, or I should say corporal, Eddie Puente, please come up. Corporal Puente has over fourteen years, excuse me, sixteen years in law enforcement, two of them being in the Kirby Police Department, where he's got his law enforcement career started. He's got fourteen years in East Central with us. All fourteen of them have been at the high school campus. Officer Puente has been a valuable asset to that campus, working with administration hand-in-hand, working with our students. He is a school-based law enforcement certification. He also is a crisis intervention training certification, and the list goes on and on. So, we're very excited to have him, and I'm going to administer the oath of office for the rank. Ready? Raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Corporal for the East Central Independent School District Police Department and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, the laws of the United States of America, and the state of Texas. So, help me God. Congratulations. That concludes our ceremony, and on behalf of the Police Department, I want to express my thanks for the support of our board members, our superintendent, and our community. We're just excited and very honored to be part of this family. Thank you.
So, before we move on to item number
And we do have a special presentation. Superintendent Toscano? All right. Julio?
Yeah. Here it comes. Good afternoon, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Toscano, board members. Hope you're having a good evening. This afternoon, CPS is here to present a nice check to us from a program that we participate, Energy Curtailing Program that we participate, called Demand Response. A little bit about the Demand Response. This is one-hundred percent voluntary. East Central, multiple districts within the city, and commercial industrial companies participate in this program for multiple reasons. Not only for the rebate we get, but it helps keep our electrical grid clean and reliable for all those who need it, especially those who are ill, sick during the high times, the high demand times, the summer when it's extremely hot, where we can, where we may potentially have brownouts and disruption in electricity. This prevents that. Not only that, but it also helps keep our environment clean. So, in all, it's a win-win situation for not only our community, our district, and CPS. It prevents them from having to bring on these other plants that put this bad gases into our air that affects everybody. Therefore, we curtail, and we prevent from having those bad gases into our atmosphere. This is a program that we've participated in six years. This is our sixth year, and since the inception of this program, the district has received a total of three hundred, three hundred and three thousand dollars at no cost to this district. It's just a good team effort from the maintenance department, everybody throughout the district that participates in it. It's very challenging because there's a lot going on during the summer. We have four months to curtail, and we only have a two-hour window. So, let's say they called a Demand Response today at three. They call us at one o'clock, and we have to start curtailing at three, but there's a lot going on during the summer with summer school, summer activities, cleaning, painting, athletics. So, it takes all of us to make this happen. Everybody that participates in maintenance, the schools, the principals, athletics, it takes all of us to make this happen. It's a great effort, team effort. This is why we're receiving this successful check of seventy-two thousand dollars. So, thank you to everybody. Does anybody have any questions about this program? All right, well, thank you.
One thing, one thing, hi, my name is Rob Leibertis. Thank you, East Central Board, for having me tonight and present this great check. One thing Julio forgot to mention, he's very humble, I'm sure you know that, is that East Central performed at a hundred and twenty-nine percent of their agreement, which is really great, and we really appreciated all the school districts' efforts, but more importantly this year, because this summer was forecasted to be one of the hottest summers in a while, and so ERCOT was asking us to curtail even more. And so, we were charged, as the account manager, to go to our school districts and our customers and ask them if they can curtail even more than they signed up for, and East Central ISD knocked it out of the park. So, thank you very much for the participation.
So, now it's my turn, so. Before we move on to item four, Public Comments, we're going to take a short break so all the parents and kids can get home and do their homework, and everybody can enjoy the rest of their evening. So, let's take a quick break for ten minutes, come back at seven o'clock, and we'll reconvene. So, thank you. Item five, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, trustees, in your electronic packet, you'll see a bound copy of this year's Community Accountability Report. We definitely pushed that out on social media, and we have hard copies at every department and campus throughout the district, as well as central office, if anybody in the community would like to see a hard copy. I know that you've had an opportunity to look through this. This is our second community-based accountability report. Definitely want to acknowledge that we've got committees of staff who have worked around each of the seven pillars to answer the key questions, which essentially are the degree to which we've accomplished what the community expects with regard to each aspect of our school system. Again, just a reminder, the attempt here was to make sure that we're communicating regularly with our community to ensure that the things that we're doing as a school system reflect the values that our community has, and that they accomplish the hopes and dreams that they have for their children. You'll also recall that part of this work was to develop a profile of a graduate, which we did with our community several years ago, and our entire school system is designed to continuously move towards realizing those outcomes for every child. We also know that this represents a complete accounting. In part, you'll find state accountability information, but we know that that alone is just one aspect of what our school system is accountable for. So, as we continue to do this work and to do this work well, we've continued to work with the Texas Performance Assessment Consortium, which is a group of now almost sixty school districts at the state level, who have been attempting to accomplish a more complete accountability system that is more transparent, it is more complete, and it reflects, again, the values that every individual community has for its school system. That particular group has tried to respond to the notion that instead of complaining about state accountability, i.e., standardized testing being the whole of accountability, and complaining about it, us, along with the other school districts, have worked really hard to create an alternative, something that is a little bit more robust, something that's a little bit more informative and useful towards the end of continuous improvement. And so, where we're at today is, as you know, last year, we created a continuous growth improvement process that consolidated all of our improvement models into one process, so we weren't duplicating efforts in very inefficient ways. And community-based accountability system, our seven pillars, were part of that work. We're working currently to bring something during goal-setting for the board to consider, which is utilizing the community-based accountability system and its seven pillars as the backbone for us to start our needs assessment process, which ultimately brings us to a place where we identify our priorities for improvement and set goals around. And so, we're really excited about what's to come in 2020. We also are making a minor adjustment because of the fact that the Seabass wasn't the backbone yet. We were trying to figure out how to signal or report quarterly on our progress, because the goal is not to, not to present the community with an end-of-year report, but rather to present publicly throughout the year progress we're making towards our goals in real time. And most importantly, what adjustments are we making in real time to ensure that we hit the mark? And so, in the interim, our goal this year was to signal on one pillar beyond the district level. At the district level, we're signaling on all seven, reporting, signaling means reporting, which is what this is. But our, but our goal ultimately is to cascade this through every campus and every department so that we're all working towards achieving the same ends. So, rather than signal or report on just one pillar, we're going to adjust the improvement process and the continuous growth process so that, again, every department and every campus next year will be setting goals around all seven pillars, and we'll be signaling throughout the year across the organization the degree to which we're accomplishing that, and what, most importantly, again, what adjustments we're making along the way. So, also, Mr. Oliver? Okay. So, at some point, I will share with the board in an email the reach, because if you'll recall, last year, we sent these, mailed these to every home. But our goal was to go paperless, and so, in part, we had to come up with a strategy to make sure that we were getting a lot of visits, a lot of reposts, a lot of retweets, and so, Mr. Oliver's going to do a little backend research in the next day or two and give us an indication of the degree to which this has been viewed throughout our community so that we ensure that we're accomplishing what we set out to accomplish. Get this in the hands of every citizen in ECISD so that we can, again, be transparent about the impact that we're making as a school system with respect to what they asked from us. Be happy to answer any more questions the board might have about this particular document, this work, this process, where we're going.
So, we were going to, we're going to, it is viewable digitally?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's going to, we want to see if that's going to be, how much it's used, but are we going to do away with the paper style completely, or will that be available for people that aren't able to view it online?
So, our, our goal was to have hard copies available at the district level, every campus and every department, but not to send fifty thousand of them out. So, last year, that's what we did. We're learning that print is not necessarily the most desirable, so we're kind of testing that this year with a digital strategy, and we're going to see if the metrics reflect that, and hopefully they do. And if they do, we'll continue this path forward. If not, we'll, we'll talk about what adjustments we need to make. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, I'm beaming, you know, it's something to have something in your hand and to show that, all of the hard work, and then although I realize, you know, we want to be, take care of the environment and that kind of thing, but just all the hard work when you look at this and see everything that went into this is just, it makes you really proud, especially considering how we felt challenged with mandates about trying to, you know, about accountability and all of the things that go in with that. And so, I think that any citizen with their hands on this or access to it on the computer would be absolutely EC proud.
Absolutely.
I agree.
I wanna acknowledge Brandon and, and his team of one, Lisa, who's a powerful teammate. Um, this, you know, last year's we were very proud of, but if you compare last year's to this year, this is definitely a level up and, and Brandon's responsible with his team, uh, putting this thing together and presenting it in this way, and we're very proud of it. And Brandon's great job, and pass that along to Lisa, as I'm pretty sure that she, uh, did a lot of the heavy lifting.
Very nice, well done. It's awesome. Thank you very much. Thank y'all. A lot of hard work. So move on to, uh, personnel report, item B.
Uh, trustees, this month's report is on page thirty in your electronic packet. Uh, and of course, uh, as you well know, uh, now that we're well into the school year, uh, in the heart of November, we're not gonna see much activity there, uh, but there is a little bit. And if you have any questions about any of those or need any additional information, as is always the case, please do not hesitate to contact me.
No comments? All right, item C, upcoming events.
Trustees, in your electronic packet, uh, calendar for November and December, just a couple of items I wanna point out. Uh, next week, the district will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. And will reopen on the second of December. Uh, in December, you'll notice that, uh, we begin holiday concert season, uh, always fantastic events. And of course, this year is our second year that we've had the opportunity to use the Performing Arts Center, uh, the Patterson. And so it just really takes those performances to a n- next level and allows, uh, the hard work of the students who are performing to be truly showcased in an appropriate manner. Um, and so I've, I wanted to highlight that on the third, we have our band holiday concert, um, at the Patterson at six-thirty. That's a Tuesday evening. Uh, the evening of the sixth, or rather, Friday the sixth, is a staff and a student holiday. Um, on the seventh, which is Saturday, is the annual Elmendorf Christmas Parade. Um, we have a lot of staff, uh, and a, and a ton of students who support that parade and mo- and, uh, and are involved in that parade. It's a great event out in the Elmendorf community, and they always appreciate our, uh, support and our presence. Uh, but in addition, uh, the high school will be hosting pancakes with Santa, so Santa will make an appearance, uh, a little bit before Christmas on the seventh, uh, between eight-thirty and eleven-thirty at the high school. If you have any young, young children you have access to, uh, I'd encourage them to come on out, um, and bring your own. On the twelfth is the choir and theater holiday spectacular, sure to be a collaborative, collaborative, collaborative showcase and a great evening. A great performance, it's very entertaining, uh, it's at six-thirty at the Patterson on the twelfth. And then the district will be closed from the twenty-third, uh, into January for the Christmas break. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on December seventeenth at six-thirty.
All right, we'll move on to action agenda items A, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school district audit. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. President, trustees, as you well know, every year per board policy, CFC, uh, the board is, 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 um, is to have the district's fiscal accounts audited by a certified public account accountant. And the, the, um, audit report is to be filed with the Texas Education Agency. Uh, this year's audit, uh, was again completed by Coleman Horton and Company, and we have representatives here from Coleman Horton, uh, to provide the, the board with a report of their findings. Uh, also in your electronic packet, you can find the audit beginning on page thirty-three and, uh, through page one-hundred-and-thirty-one. So, uh, again, your scroll bar is generally at the bottom of your iPad. We'll be directed to view several pages in the report, I believe, so.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dustin Ruth. I'm from Coleman Horton and Company. Uh, this year Derek Walker, he's usually the, uh, partner in charge, but he couldn't be here tonight. He wished he could, but he had to go to another district meeting tonight. So I'll be. So I'll be handling the report tonight. Um, we can start on page, uh, thirty-seven of your electronic format. And throughout this presentation, I'm just gonna go over a few of the financial statements and just, uh, some, just our, our audio opinions. If you have any questions throughout the process, let me know. We can go over them. On page thirty-seven, this is our, is our opinion letter on the district's, uh, financial statements for the year ended August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Uh, briefly specifies that we audited the district's financial statements and that the financial statements are the responsibility that the district administrators, our responsibility is to provide the opinion on those financial statements. And at the bottom of that page thirty-seven there, the last paragraph is our opinion, and it reads, um, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of East Central Independence School District as of August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. This is known as an unqualified or clean opinion and is the highest level of assurance that auditor can express on the side of financial statements." And I'd like to, I thank the district's administrators and staff for helping us, are providing us, us with all the stuff we need throughout our audit report period, and they always do a great job with the books. Um, and move, I guess moving on to pages, um, page forty-nine of your, every PDF. This is the first, um, set of financial statements that is included in the audit report on page forty-nine. This is the, uh, statement activities report. And just at, just at the bottom there, the third lineup, your change in net position for the year was an increase of four million, seven thirty thousand, two oh eight. Uh, your beginning net position was fifty, fifty-one million, five ninety-seven, three oh one, leaving you with the ending net position of fifty-six million, three twenty-seven, five oh nine. So on this statement activities, it brings in all your assets and all your liabilities of the district, and that's where your ending net position is at the end of August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. On page fifty-two of your PDF, this is the, uh, fund statement that encompasses, uh, all the district's governmental funds. It pre- presents some major fu- some funds as major includes a catch-all for all of their, uh, non-major funds. The first column there is your general fund. And at the bottom there, the third lineup is your change in fund balance for the year, which was a decrease of five million, one ninety-two, two fourteen, leaving you with the ending fund balance. The last line there is twenty million, nine twenty-three, two twelve. But as you can see, about three-quarters of the way up there, you had a, about ten million dollars, ten million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two ninety-four expenditures in your facilities and construction for the year, so that was already planned. So that's the major, that's the major reason for you have such a decrease in fund balance for the general fund. The next, uh, column is the debt service fund. You had an increase of three hundred and three thousand, nine thirty-eight for the year, leaving you with the ending fu- fund balance of six million, one fifteen, eight sixty-nine. And the third column is the other fu- other funds. It has, this includes all your special revenue funds, all, all other funds. And it had a, a decrease of eleven million, five oh six, eight sixty-four, leaving you with the ending fund balance of two million, nine forty-one, eight seventy-three. And in that decrease of eleven million is, is your capital projects fund. It was totally expended in this prior year, a little over twelve million dollars or so. I mean, that was the, the, and, and any of those projects that was completed in that year. Anybody have any questions about those fund statements? And moving on to page eighty-eight of your PDF, this is the, uh, the budgetary change.
Eighty-eight?
Page eighty-eight of your PDF. At the top there is your original final budgets and your actual amounts for your revenue. So your final revenue and budget was eighty-five million, eight seventeen, six sixty-eight, and your actual amounts were eighty-five million, eight eighty-two. So a positive variance of sixty-four thousand. About three-quarters way down, your total, uh, budget, final budget expenditures was ninety-six million, seven eighty-nine oh five, and your actual was ninety million, five oh three, three thirty-seven. So you didn't have any budget over expenditures, which is, is just good. Um, that's the only things I really wanted to go over. If you have any questions, let me know. And we'd like to thank you for, for doing the audit again this year and, yeah, if you have any questions, we can go over them.
Anybody got any questions?
No, sir.
Glad to know everybody behaved themselves this year.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I recommend that the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen audit of the district's fiscal accounts be approved by the board as prepared and presented by Coleman Horton and Company, LLP.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the, um, the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school district audit. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move.
We have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do I have a second? We have a second from Ms. Claudia Barrientos. Anybody have any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, let's move on to action agenda item B, consider casting the East Central School District allotted votes in the election for the Bear County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Mr. President, I move to allocate East Central seventy-four votes in manner of thirty-seven votes for Sherri Byram, Byram, and thirty-seven votes for John Fisher.
We have a motion to cast thirty-seven votes for Sherri.
Byram.
Byram, and then thirty-seven votes for.
John Fisher.
John Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Uh, do we have a, uh, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a second from Mr. Victor Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to action agenda item C, budget amendment number nineteen dash twenty dash zero one, local maintenance. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, Mr. President and trustees, uh, the general operating budget for the district requires additional funds in function eighty-one to cover the final completion of the sixteen-seventeen construction projects as well as some new facility improvement projects. In your electronic pack, I'm sorry, in your miscellaneous packet, you'll see a, a copy of a one-page document that details out, um, the items that, uh, we intend to, uh, complete, either payment on as a result of the, uh, closing out of the bond construction programs, as well as some new construction. Uh, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Uh, a big piece of this new, new capital improvement project is going to be what we discussed at the special meeting, and that would be the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for the Hornet Track replacement. Um, we're also going to complete some work behind the maintenance, uh, building that you're also familiar with as a result of, uh, the new marching pad. We've got some runoff issues there that need to be addressed with the detention pond. We've spoken quite a bit about that. Uh, but this also includes, uh, the funding to complete that project. Um, we're going to upgrade or replace, rather, the chlorine, uh, pump system at the high school sewer plant. And, uh, we're gonna start, uh, our asphalt repair and replacement program. Um, and we're gonna start with Sinclair. So, so we're proposing to, to replace the parking lot asphalt at Sinclair, and then we'll work our way down the list in the future. I believe our next priority project is probably at Harmony, uh, but that will be something we'll discuss with you at a later time. Uh, and then, of course, the rest of what you see there is payments to JORS as well as LPA and Guido. Um, and as we complete, uh, those, um, final warranty-related items, et cetera, we're still holding back, uh, some of the fees for LPA, uh, and Guido until those programs are completely stamped. Um, so the total amendment that we're looking at tonight is one million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, again, most of which was planned in advance, had a fund balance to complete the, um, bond construction program, the fund balance portion of that. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
No questions? So we have a recommendation from the board, uh, from the superintendent to approve the budget amendment number nineteen dash twenty dash zero one, local maintenance as presented. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Have a motion? Motion and second from Victor Garza. Any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I think so, yes. I got Dale Brazil.
Dale did that one.
Uh, move on to action agenda item D, investment pool, Texas FIT. Mr. Toscano?
Sir, trustees, um, we're bringing tonight a resolution for your consideration, um, that will allow the district to, um, add an additional investment pool. Um, this particular investment pool is Texas FIT, uh, which stands for Fixed Income Trust. And essentially what, uh, it allows us to do is diversify our investment portfolio by adding, um, some additional options. Uh, Texas FIT, um, offers a couple of different pools. They offer a cash pool, um, as well as a government pool, and they're both a little bit different. Uh, but essentially, um, they're, they're conservative. Uh, they allow for same-day liquidity, and again, they allow us to di- diversify our portfolio. I'd like for, uh, Ms. Burns, uh, to speak a little bit about it, but more importantly, I'd like for a gentleman by the name of Ken, Ken Cook to, uh, say a few words about Texas FIT. Um, Ken, if you may or may not recall, has worked with the district, uh, in this manner for the better part of twenty-five years plus. Um, and so he's been a good partner, very reliable for us. And so, uh, wanna introduce you again to him and talk a little bit about his, uh, organization.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Toscano and the board and President Massengale. Uh, Ken, if you would come up this way. Uh, Ken has had a long relationship with East Central. It's probably about thirty years. You know, we have a long relationship with Victor, uh, Victor Cryoga, you know, our inv- uh, our securities and investment. But Ken is the Victor in the investment side. Uh, we've had a very long relationship with him, uh, for about thirty years. And so he's now with Texas FIT, and we feel like it will really be a new and good pool for the district to join. Uh, it has really good rates. Uh, it'll be a good diversification for us and to move some of our money from money market to Texas FIT and earn a little bit more, uh, earnings potential from there. And so I'd let Ken talk about it, and he'll brief you on Texas FIT.
Good evening, uh, superintendent, distinguished board members. My name is Ken Couch. I'm the director with Water Walker Investments. Uh, we are an independent, uh, asset management firm. We're not a broker-dealer. We're not a bank. Uh, we are a truly independent, uh, asset management firm. We only work, uh, I believe I gave Ms. Burns a presentation. I believe she handed it out there. We only work with local governments and not-for-profits, so we're not, uh, working with high, you know, net worth individuals investing. It's only school districts, cities, counties, uh, hospital systems, university systems, and so on. In fact, when I leave here tonight, I get to drive all the way to Alpine, Texas, where I'm gonna be at a county commissioner's court meeting in the morning as they're approving us, uh, for, at their county. So it's just part of what I do. But, um, I have been working with the s- school district for about twenty-five years or so. Uh, I had more hair when I started, and, um, Judy, uh, knows about my children and what, the vacations they've been on, so we've really built a good relationship, a trusting relationship, uh, as well between ourselves and, and the district. The funds that we are offering, uh, for, for the district to get involved in is the cash pool as well as the government fund. Cash pool has a mix of treasuries, agencies, commercial paper, whereas the government fund will just have treasuries and agencies only. Very similar to the funds that you're using right now for the district. Both funds are S and P rated, triple A, which is a Public Funds Investment Act requirement. And of course, the, uh, funds do meet the Public Funds Investment Act. That's the first thing that, that, that we have to go through. And then secondly, we review your local and legal investment policy to make sure what we're investing in follows the guidelines of East Central ISD. So those are the steps we take when we're investing those funds. As superintendent and Judy was saying as well, these are overnight liquidity funds, so you're not locked in. Put your money in today, take it out tomorrow, need be. Um, the funds are paying a very competitive yield, even. The funds are paying a very competitive yield, even though the Fed's not helping us right now with continuing to lower rates. But the yield right now, today, we were paying a two percent. I mean, ten years ago, who would have gotten excited about a two percent? But we're, we're excited about that, which is about five points above other similar funds. So just you take that five-point difference, do that on ten million dollars, that's fifty thousand in interest income annually. So that may be a benefit to the interest income for the district's funds. And I'm here to answer any questions.
You've, you've got us listed here as a cash pool and a government pool, and you said the government pool wasn't available yet. Where do you expect it to fall in the range of the thirty-day yield comparisons? Can you project that?
No, that's a great question. That fund will be open at the end of this month. And, you know, it's really tied to, again, what the, what's out there. So treasuries and agencies, those are paying right now. The yields are in the one-seventy range. So we expect to be in that range. The spread is a little bit higher in the cash pool because of the commercial paper incorporated into the fund.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval for a resolution to participate in an additional investment pool option, which is Texas Fit, the Fixed Income Trust, as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to participate in additional investment pool option, which is Texas Fit. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Who's that? Victor. Anybody having questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item, action, item seven, consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled from the consent agenda? No? Do I have a motion? We have a motion, right?
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Steve Bryant. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anybody have anything else to say before we wrap this bad boy up?
Well, this will be the last time we meet until after Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah.
Well. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving with your family, and I hope you enjoy your break and have a relaxing and make a lot of memories, eat a lot of food, maybe a little adult beverages. Anyways, thank you all for everything that you do, and I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well. Be safe out on the road if y'all are doing any traveling. Enjoy your time off. That's it for me. Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second? Motion carries. We're out of here.